Vice Mayor Pedro Blos. Mayor Franklin Chumpaco.
Present.
Mayor Anthony Charloff.
Is he online?
Vice Mayor Christopher Ferrin. Mayor Michael Gumatauto. Mayor Robert Hoffman. Vice Mayor Anne Leon Guerrero. Mayor Francis Lozama.
Present.
Mayor Rudy Paco. Mayor Johnny Canata. Mayor Luis Rivera, present. Mayor Frankie Salas. Mayor Wayne Santos.
Present.
Mayor Kevin Siswiko. Mayor Vicente Taitegui. Mayor Brian Cholahi. Vice Mayor Edward Tosco. Vice Mayor Albert Tovis. Mayor Alan Nangokta. Mr. President, we have fifteen members present.
Thank you. In compliance with the open government law, this meeting notice was advertised in the Guam Daily Post on February twenty-five and March three, two thousand twenty-five, and posted on the Government of Guam Public Meeting Notice Portal. Additionally, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the Mayor's Council of Guam's YouTube channel. Please stand for the National Anthem of the Guam Hymn. Thank you again, everyone, for joining us this morning. Thank you for being early to greet the Taipei Director. We're going to change the guest speakers up a little bit. It doesn't change the type or the topic, so it's, we're gonna proceed. But the judge, Barcines, is not able to join us this morning. However, we have someone better. And so, if I could go ahead to call to the podium, Rosanna Villagomez Agun, to speak on, not on behalf of the judge, but instead of him, we're gonna hear from her. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Alec. Good morning. My name is Rosanna Villagomez Agun. I'm the Chief Probation Officer with the Judiciary of Guam. Judge Barcines really wanted to be here, and he had requested that we request his appearance here before the Mayor's Council. However, his court calendar has prevented him from appearing this morning. And so, the little bit of change in the agenda, it had indicated that it was juvenile probation to address mental health community response. Actually, it's, I'm here, and he had wanted to address our juvenile justice system and our Committee on Family Engagement and Community Resources. Judge Barcines is also, he handles both juvenile cases as well as the Mental Health Court cases. So, and I know that he had a stakeholders' meeting for Mental Health Court not too long ago, and thank you, there were the two mayors that appeared for that. And, but for this morning, what it is, is that we've been working, the judiciary has been working under the leadership with Chief Justice Torres and Lieutenant Governor Josh Tenorio, in taking a look at our juvenile justice system here on island. And so, there were several committees that were formed to take a look at all the different aspects of our juvenile justice system. And one of those committees is the Family Engagement and Community Resources Committee, which is headed by Judge Barcines, and I am a member of. And our committee is comprised of other stakeholders within our community and our government, such as the Department of Youth Affairs, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, the Homeless Assistant Office of Homeless Assistance, Guam Police Department. So we have a combination of committee members. And the objective for our committee is to inventory all our community resources on island, so that we can identify any gaps in services, any overlaps in resources, any resources we're not aware of, that we can use to assist our other juveniles that we work with who are justice-involved, any services that can augment family engagement in our court proceedings, our case plannings, and to help increase our service delivery. And the reason why we wanted to appear to you, mayors, was because we had sent out a survey to all the various stakeholders on island, community organizations, as well as agencies. And we have had very little response from you mayors, and we know and recognize that you're very, very important to our communities, and you're a crucial part of this. So, if I could just ask you to, we received five responses, and so, if I could just ask you, and we've done a couple follow-ups, we can continue to do that and get back to those who have not responded, and if we could just ask you to fill out that survey. Basically, the survey asks, you know, what services and programs do you have in your village, what ages they are, what, if there are any fees that go with the services, if a referral is needed, you know, are you willing, are your programs, are you willing to also become involved in any of, you know, the court proceedings? And how do you advertise your services as well, if it's on social media and what have you? And any contact information? So it asked a bunch of questions related to the services. And this is really important, so that we can be able to fully compile a comprehensive view and of what is available on our island, so that we can make our recommendations and we'll know how to best move forward from here to aid our minors who are justice-involved and their families. And so, that's the whole reason for the presentation today. And I'd be, I really appreciate your putting us on the agenda and taking time to listen to us.
Thank you. Did anyone have any questions about the survey? Did you not receive the survey, or is... Okay, thank you. So, anyone have any questions about that? Well, so, what, again, Rosanna, I guess, what you might, we're encountering then is because there's a group of new mayors, so we could address that, you know, we could, we could take a look at them again. And if you haven't received from those new mayors, then we can follow up with them.
Yes, we, we actually received a couple from a couple of new mayors, so, so we did send it out. I know some, some had completed the survey prior. We sent it out before the election, knowing that there was an election, but we thought we could at least get some information. And then we did follow-ups after the election. So, I know that you're very busy, and I'm sure that, you know, this is just a simple, you know, I guess, not being able to see it or oversight. But, but we wanted to really engage you into helping us with this survey. That would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. The Mayor of Sinahania is recognized. Do you know where the five villages that responded, so that we can know? Are you able to say it? You can.
I can, okay. If you'd like to know, Sinahania, Pidi, Hagatnia, Ordachalampago, and Bergada. These are the five.
Beba. Only because Pidi's on there.
Thank you.
But, but again, to the, for the new ones that did not, were not here, Beba to you because you're gonna fill it out today, and it'll be submitted.
Thank you. We really appreciate it.
The Mayor of Agony Heights is recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Alec. Just so you know, that Agony Heights is, we host the Juvenile Drug Court at the Basketball Court. And it's, I believe it's been a very big success so far, since I've been in office, and they've been doing it for several years. So, we're in full support of this, of the program, and we're very happy to host these individuals that are making their way through the program to make their lives better.
Yes, no, thank you. And we do know that you're all, you all have programs, and you're all involved in your minors, you know, in your community. And so, and we appreciate that. What we wanna do is, we want to just be able to gather all that information and know what exactly is out there. And are there, are there services and programs that we're not tapping into? And are there any overlaps in, in what we're seeing? Are there gaps in, in any of the programs and how well we can provide our services to our individuals? You may have a wonderful program we don't know about, that we can easily tap. And as much as possible for us, what's important is that we work with our communities, regardless of whether they're juveniles or adults, if there's something within their village that they can avail themselves of, and not have to go to another village or not have to go elsewhere, since we know that a lot of our, our families have transportation problems, have a whole bunch of other challenges. You know, that would be wonderful information for us to know. And so, so, we know that you're very busy and that you have a lot of wonderful things going on in your villages. It's, we would like to hear about them, so that we can be more informed and better able to provide the referrals to those programs, or engage you into, into some of those programs that we have, as well as, you know, in terms of network with some of the families that we have and that we work with. So, thank you.
Thank you, too. And we'll, we'll follow up on our end and let you know, and if you need any help, you know, you can, you know how to get over to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
So, George Marcy.
Go ahead, her bets. Moving along to another great fellow that all of us, most of us, know, on the Mayor's Council of Guam. Mr. Felix Rages is here with a group of some other people. We'll let him be the one to introduce everyone, if that's okay, from the Western Pacific Regional Fisheries Management Council. If we can go ahead, Felix, sir, if you could come forward, and then if you'd like to make the introductions, you could certainly do so.
Good morning. Mayor Jesse Ali. Good morning, mayors. How are you guys doing this morning?
Good morning.
I work for the, and I've addressed you guys once or twice before. I work for the Western Pacific Regional Fisheries Management Council, and I'm the island coordinator for Guam. And in fact, I won't be the one speaking this morning. Our chief program officer from Honolulu is here, together with a few of our staff members. And instead, I would like to introduce Mr. Mark Mitsuyasu, who will explain why we're here and what he's gonna be talking about. Mr. Mark Mitsuyasu.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the time. Good morning, mayors. Nice to be here on island. It's been a while since we've been back. I have a short slide, and for those of you who are not familiar with the council, at least to just give you an idea who we are and kind of what we do. So, next slide, please. Yeah, so, the council, our jurisdiction covers the Western Pacific region, includes Hawaii, Guam, American Samoa, and CNMI. Can you show the next slide, please? Yeah, so we are established by Congress about, almost fifty years ago. And we're one of eight councils across the country. Our primary purpose is to develop federal fishing regulations. And so, we manage fisheries through what we call fishery management plans. And we have a plan here for the Mariana Islands. And so, we're here to, you know, meet with the community, hear about, hear about issues, and see if we can improve our management of the resources in partnership with the local agencies. Next slide, please. So, the Inflation Reduction Act, I'm sure a lot of you have heard about this. There's a lot of funding that has gone out in support of that. The councils have received funding to support some projects and programs, and we receive funding to do the same. The primary purpose for our funding is to understand the impacts of climate change on communities. The other part of it is that the outcomes of these efforts need to inform governance. So that's kind of like what our, our goal and objectives are. And so, the next slide, please. And so, what we're hoping to do over the next two years, and which is why we're here today, to kind of share this with you, is to support four projects that we are just kicking off this year. The first one has to do with planning. We call it scenario planning. And the one that'll touch in the Mariana Islands is our small boat planning efforts. Looking at future scenarios, what might happen or what can happen to the small boat fleets, and how we might have to adjust our management regimes to better address those. So that's one of the efforts. The second effort is, we're gonna do a regulatory review of our fishery ecosystem plans. As I mentioned earlier, that's how the council manages fisheries across the region. We have a plan for the Mariana Archipelago, which includes both Guam and CNMI. And those plans, we will be hiring a contractor to help us do the reviews. But as part of that review process, we wanna engage the community and understand what works and what doesn't work, and how we can make things better. But I think the important part of that effort is gonna be looking at how the territorial agencies manage resources, fishery resources, and how that lines up with what we do on the federal side. And when I talk about the federal side, I'm talking about the three to two hundred mile. That's kind of our jurisdiction, is offshore. The third one is to look at protected species. The biggest issue we deal with in our region is really interactions with protected species in our big boat fishery, which is the longline fishery out of Hawaii and American Samoa. And if climate affects movement of fish, interactions with protected species might change, and so, we're gonna be looking at that. The last one here is engaging Pacific Island communities, and this is the one I think I wanted to touch on the most, was how we are able to understand or better engage the local communities to see if climate change is affecting, yeah, the fisheries and the local communities. We held a series of meetings in CNMI last week. Both, we went to Saipan, Tinian, Rota. Last night, we had an awesome meeting in Maristow. Yeah, tonight, we're gonna be visiting the Dedado community of Dedado, so I wanna thank you guys for that opportunity, too. So, as part of this overall project, this is what we're gonna be doing. So, over the next two years, with regards to community engagement, we plan to come out twice. So this is the first round. We're gonna build on this effort and try and schedule meetings in the fall. And then we're gonna repeat the process again next year. Yeah, so, next slide, please. So just some, some general timing things. The award, our funding ends, end of next year, so we hope to wrap up our efforts by then, and then take that information and see how we can improve our fishery ecosystem plans and processes. As I mentioned earlier, we, we held our meetings here in the Marianas last weekend. This week, we'll be in Hawaii next month, or later this month, through next month, and then we'll be in American Samoa in June. And then we'll start the process again. And so, until then, I hope we can work with the communities and understand how climate is affecting, affecting, you know, your, your community members and fisheries. Okay, next slide, please. So, to close, there's my contact information, my first, last name at wpcouncil.org. You know Felix. Felix is always available to contact. The other staff person that I have, we have out here with us today is Josh Demello. He, he manages all of our island fisheries and a bunch of other stuff, too. We hired a contractor to help us with this community engagement effort, and that's the Pacific Islands Fisheries Group, and they are back here, too. We worked last night together to coordinate that meeting. They have some information for you. We'll leave, we'll leave with the staff that you guys can, can pick up about, about them, you know. But otherwise, that's all I have. I just wanted to let you guys know what we're planning to do. And we're hoping to be out talking to the community and meeting with the fishermen. Anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? The Mayor of Chalampago Board is recognized.
Mark, do you have any information with regards to what the council has been doing for the past year? And then also, probably you can assist me, right? I have Pago Bay, which is part of the Chalampago area. I know that individuals used to fish in the area, and I'm looking at reviving the area. So, how, what type of assistance can you provide in terms of, I know that individuals still go fishing there. It is a small community, and mostly individuals from the village who fish at the Pago Bay area.
Yeah, so, so our council, we meet four times a year, and we have representatives from the four island areas that I had mentioned and was in the map. We also have members that represent the community of Guam, and then also the director for, or secretary from the Department of Agriculture and the Division of Aquatics and Resources. So, our efforts lately for Guam has focused a lot on the military impacts and development on the offshore fisheries and access. Yeah, with regards to local community initiatives and helping, we have in the past and are continuing, continue to be open to working with the communities to assess issues, assess resources, understand priorities, and develop plans to coordinate and see how we can address those kinds of issues. And last night, when we met in the village of Malesso, about two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen, we developed the community-based management plan for that southern area. And so, that's just an example of the type of efforts that we have and are still willing to participate in, so.
So are there any available grants that individuals can, you know, get assistance with, or?
There are, and they come, they come up, depending on what the priorities are for the grants themselves, the criteria, and how it aligns with what the committee is looking to do. So there's various different opportunities, and we're aware of those that come up, and we'd be happy to share those with you guys. Yeah, but we don't necessarily fund directly. Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you being here. Anyone else from your group wanna say anything, or you care?
Anybody else wanna? They have some magazines that they produce.
Okay.
We'll leave, and I think, thank you very much.
Thank you, too. Thanks, Mark. Oh, I'm sorry. The Mayor of Agony Heights did have something to say.
I was gonna say, Mark, you cannot come in a beer of time. Today is Ash Wednesday, and we love fish today. Did you bring anything here?
I have chocolate fish.
Oh, chocolate fish. Oh, that works. Thank you so much, again. And our next guest speaker, you know what, we, it was alphabetical order, so Christine. Those, those older mayors know Christine. The newer mayors, welcome. Or, if you don't know her, you're gonna learn to know her, because you need to, you need her a lot for many different things. But from the Department of Agriculture, from forestry, the chief, Christine, you know her as Christine Camacho, but she's Christine Ferrin now, right? Yeah.
And I saw the podium. My coworkers were like, "Chief, are you gonna stand behind that?" I go, "Oh, man." I like to walk around, because I think it's just more.
Yeah, take the microphone, though.
Thank you. Yes, 'cause I, I move, and I noticed people were talking about it.
Just because of the recording.
So, can I get my PowerPoint, Jordan? All right. I prepared like thirty-seven I prepared like 37 slides for a 15-minute presentation. What's that say about my personality?
Hurry up.
But I wanted to, you're going to have these slides, so I'm going to skim through quite a bit, but wanted to make sure that when we leave here today, you're going to have these resources, you're going to have this information. And let me just start with the introduction. So Manana Sizos. I know it's getting late in the morning, but still, Manana Sizos. And my name is Christine Comacho-Faharin, and again, yes, the Forestry Division Chief for the Guam Department of Agriculture, your Guam Department of Ag. And I'd like to introduce real quickly, because once I start, I might forget them. No. Our, like, awesome team. So we have a very small crew. If you know your Forestry and Soil Resources Division, we are a very small team, but we're tasked with island-wide coverage, and we're going to go over those programs. But before I begin, Asia Lin O'Millau, say hi, Asia. So if you knew me in the beginning, we started off together as a team in Pig Hunting Derby when I was at Coastal Management. Then I moved into Ag for Fire Program. Asia is now taking my hat, literally, from Fire Program, and she is our new Fire Program Manager. So, she's very new, too, so she's shy. We're going to break that bubble. Shay Lynn Solis is actually through Smart Tree Specific. She is a consultant, but she works in our office. She's with us all the time. Smart Tree Specific is the organization that has been helping us implement our urban and community forestry work for Guam. We were challenged with not having people hired, lack of funding, so many things. What do you do? We thought outside the box, and we're like, "Let's work with an organization that does amazing work in Hawaii, and they're here with us." And so Shay was, the local girl, picked up to do the work with us here in urban and community forestry. So there are a lot of wonderful things coming out of our UCF program. You have seen, maybe you didn't realize, but you have seen the work that's coming out of UCF. So, that's Shay. And then Rudy Estoy's been with us forever. So Rudy Estoy, he manages our landscape scale restoration projects, so the big ones. The reforestation projects down south. We'll be making our way up north, but the southern landscape's really been struggling with wildfires. And so trying to recover that, help with your flood challenges, help with your fire challenges, 911 calls because of smoke issues. You know, forestry touches on many avenues, and public health and public safety is very much part of addressing the work that, you know, through the work we do, we can address some of those challenges. So Rudy Estoy, so through landscape scale restoration and forest stewardship. So support for landowners, private properties, that's the program and the manager you would meet. And Asia for all of fire concerns and questions and outreach and Smoky Bear. And Shay, because urban and community forestry is the front door. It is the, sometimes the only time somebody will recognize a tree in their community. The tree in the parking lot, the tree on the median, the tree at the apartment complex. That is our entry into everything forestry. So our UCF program is a gem. They all are. Okay. I probably went through all my slides. Can I? Jordan? So I was supposed to, and I've always historically started with our mission, and so I'm going to read this for you. It's our, "Our mission at your Forestry and Soil Resources Division is to conserve, protect, and enhance Guam's vegetative environment and sustain natural resources that are dependent on healthy forests." It's a big mission, because if you're just reading it on the surface, it's trees and vegetation. But what lives between all of those trees and that vegetation? Thriving community, your villages. Wherever there's a tree and vegetation, there's water. Wherever there's water, there's people. You are very much at the heart of this mission. Next slide. Only because we have a new logo, we love it, we want people to understand it. We went from the original logo, which I think many of you can recognize, is probably clipart. And when I was given the opportunity to take the job as the division chief, the first thing we wanted to do was, "Let's put a new face on this." Something that represents our community and who we are. Next slide. We have program icons. I'm not going to read you the whole thing, but each icon in our logo is represented here, and if you see us in the field, you'll see the elements of the icons in our uniform, and you'll get to know and be familiar with who we are. So the flame, of course, diverse ecosystems, the threats that impact those ecosystems from ridge to reef, our constant and ever vigilant teams and community working towards wildfire awareness and prevention. In forest stewardship, we utilize the ephit flower. Strength, endurance, resistance to trauma and threat. And so we use the ephit to represent our forest stewardship program, because the heart of the work begins with the people. The forest stewardship embraces and understands the importance of the private, of a private landowner, and the, what is it, the largest landowner, right, for Guam? And so, well, other than DOD. Different topic, different meeting. Urban and community forestry represented by our hut. The foundation, going right back again to community. The tree in your yard, on your street, in your village, it's connecting us. Forest health is represented by the galsali flower. You don't have galsali on your walls. We're going to change that. So the galsali flower. If you're unfamiliar with our galsali flower, she's a beautiful, strong little thing hanging along the clifflines of Guam. Strong, resilient, weathering all storms and winds and waves. And through this one, we find the strength of our people and our community, and we use that one for forest health and resilience. Isn't that beautiful? Next slide. And I'll tell you, the entire team, not just program managers and myself, the entire team was represented and sat together to go over what represented us. Your pescadots, your fishers, your hunters, that's who makes up your forestry crew. Division highlights, because people like highlights, but this does not by any means cover the work and the depth and the expanse of who we are and what we do. But everybody liked the Christmas tree swap? I saw messages all over. "Christine, are you guys having the Christmas tree drop?" I was like, "Yes." We had to get creative because our chipper has been down, and that stalled us. And if you know me and you want to partner with us, you will know that we will always find a way to make something happen, right? Our chipper broke down a couple of years ago. We still accepted some trees. We're like, "We'll figure this out." This year, we decided we're going to try a biofuels project, and we'll accept your trees. We had a couple kilns in the yard for other projects. So we'll accept your Christmas trees, we'll burn those down to biochar and use that char to amend soils in our project areas. So, we found a way. Fires, I think I updated, yep, I updated the number. So wildland fires to date by your crew in response, forestry has responded to 37 wildfires across the island to date. There have been already, I mean, this is, this number is just forestry response. Remember, GFD has, what, 12 stations? And only so many engines that are responding? And so when you look at the average call of a station shift, forestry is right there keeping up with the average. Forestry is right there keeping up with that average. I need to emphasize that, because when they're not fighting fire, they're not in a station. They're out in the field, cutting fire break, collecting seed, working in nursery, cutting fire break, cutting fire break. Then they get a fire call, they put the bush cutter away, and they go to the fire. It's very important that the community, you, the leadership, understand, like, when we say, "We're going to get there," we got to put the bush cutter away, secure the fire, and we'll get to you. Next slide. Oh, I got to hurry. Okay, these are just, I wanted to throw some images of the crew. If you see them, I got a call the other day, "Oh, you know, forestry's sitting back at, where were they? Where were they? PD bomb holes, they're sitting back, you know, just like doing nothing while GFD's fighting fire and hog it." I was at Diamond looking for quotes at the time, and I took that call, and I was like, "My crew is probably taking lunch, probably having their first meal of the day, having started their fire at 8:00 AM." They started their fire that particular day in Nimitz. So, if you see them doing that, look how tired they already look. The other photo, they're scouting fire, they're trying to figure out, "When do we need to start moving in on this?" And then, next slide. Just some images of the various types of work. I'm sorry if it's a little hard to see. We've got them up doing tree inspections. Some of the true, some of the crew members are certified down, trained in climbing. So you may see one, one of them in a tree, or two of them in a tree. Nursery work. They're opening up access, and then here's one of our regularly accessed trails off Kotal in the conservation area and the road, because people are bringing their off-road vehicles in, which all it does is really damage and weaken our ability to respond, because now a vehicle went into the conservation area and it's been tearing up the road. So the guys were doing some, what little road repair they could do, literally back braking work to try and fix that road. And so more fire breaks. Next slide. More views. Next slide. There we are. After fire, they're walking back. Next slide. So how do we do the work? The effort doesn't come from just me. I'm not a chief that's just like, "Oh, you're going to do this, this, and this." We have program managers that lead really great committees. So we create, we have Forest Stewardship Coordinating Committee, UCF Forestry Advisory Council. We're also part of the Guam and Based Species Council. We're represented in there. And then we have the Forest Action Plan Advisory Council. Our Forest Action Plan, you're going to hear from me, because we have an update that's due. It's a gentle update. It sort of prioritizes your forestry's, your forestry division's work and how we want to direct funding. So it's an important document for funding. Next slide. So if you don't have people represented, we, the mayor's council gets the invitation for every committee, so you can pick which committee you would like to. I would recommend, if you're from the south, have somebody in that fire committee. If you're from the north, northern challenges are now increasing. Fires look very different in the north, but they're very much an issue. So put a representative in that committee. Asia Lin's the good one to talk to for that, and you've met them all. Next one. So just for you, you can look at this later. Next slide. This is the dream. Next slide. Forest Action Plan, we'll get through that. Next slide. This is me just like, "I only have like a minute left." Next slide. Oh, everybody likes this slide. This is money. So we've had, when I started in forestry, we had like four grants, and fire only had one. My first year, I doubled the grants, and then every year since, we've increased our grants. We've had multiple grants running at the same time. This was working in a vision where we had procurement, admin staff. We had trained people that could just really move things, right? Remember? And my admin person left. She went to higher-paid position outside of agency. Procurement, new system challenges, marwar, everything. The dream and the vision of five-year planning, which is what fought for all that money, we are now sitting in a seat where I'm going to be losing quite a bit of this money because of lack of movement and procurement. I now have new admin, but there's training, right? New people, new training, they got to get them onboarded. So we're working really hard. I have a really amazing crew, really amazing. But we're looking at losing quite a bit of money with lack of movement. And you'll see PD assets up there. I've been working with the mayors forever to try and get this fire awareness project off the ground. They got their first set of supplies and PPEs the first year, but then the contract work just didn't get assigned. So I'm showing you this, not to brag about dollars, not to cry about challenges, but I'm showing you this slide, very transparent, about what we fought for for funding. These were competitions. And because I'm looking to you to help us figure out how you want to prioritize your forestry opportunities here. Our money brings in training, it brings in the PPEs and the supplies and equipment that we need to do the work. I just can't buy rolling stock. I can't buy trucks. Only, so do three grants up there now. Repi, America the Beautiful, and an Endangered Species Grant from Fish and Wildlife Service have provided us an opportunity to buy a truck, which we're still waiting for. So that, just sharing that to be transparent. If you like the type of work, if you like what's coming out of that, reach out, and let's see what we can collaborate on. Next? Okay, this is the intro to the programs. Next, I'm going over time. Let's just go. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. Maybe we just go to like the last couple of slides. Fires. See, I'm ridiculous. I'm sorry. But you get to see it.
You're going to give us copyright.
Look at that. Look at that, mayor, that's all of this. Look at that. Products, resources. So you will have this PowerPoint, they'll share it with you. The products slide towards the end, that shows you all the things that we have created. Guam-centric infographics, brochures, the packets you've been handed, doesn't even cover the whole slew, but you've got posters that we just created, Guam-based information, the Pacific Fire Exchange fact sheets that you have. I sent the mayor's council an email with like a ton of attachments. My role is to help provide access, education, training, opportunity, because if I can do that, and we can do that for you, then we can help you really, really strengthen and support your villages. But before I leave, tree cutting permits. Mayors? Mayors?
Hurry up before you leave. You better talk about that.
Tree cutting permits. Okay? It's not a suggestion, it is a requirement. Okay, you are such an artist. You got it. Mayor knows, he calls me all the time. "Mayor, I got one from your office." Yes! Tree cutting permits, please. If we can help guide you on the right cut, good cut, bad cut, we won't lose so many trees. Typhoon Marwar was a great testament to keeping a healthy tree on your village street, what it can do to protect houses. I had an acacia tree between my house and my neighbor's house, because I was practicing on this tree. I planted an acacia tree in my yard, yes. But I've used it to practice my pruning. When Typhoon Marwar hit, my tree, it snapped. But everything on the opposite side of that tree, on my neighbor's yard, safe. No damage, nothing. Her opposite yard, open, because my house was here, her house is here, my tree's here. Everything on this side, damage, debris. There were no breaks. Trees are your windbreaks. Trees are your sound barriers. Trees are insulators to help protect you. Grass, no. Trees, yes. Okay? Tree cutting permits. Any questions?
Any questions? The mayor of the morning is recognized.
Okay, where we at?
Oh, two are right.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot you guys were sitting here.
Do you still have a schedule of the, you know, the trimming of the shrubs or the bushes all along the sidewalks of Route 1?
You know what?
Because they used to do that. Now there's a lot that's all gone now? And, you know, people were just asking about it, like, why did they, you know, they're asking, "Is it the business, or is it you guys that removed that?"
To my knowledge. So since I've been with forestry, we haven't, we have not done the maintenance on the shrubs along the street there. We always thought, I think, that it was a GBB thing, or that the mayor's office, but if there is a desire for support, let's connect with Shay, our urban and community team, because what we're hoping is like the schools, you know, you always have school, you always have work before the school opens. So why can't we schedule inspections? Tree inspections, any vegetative management work that needs to be done ahead of time, so we can schedule. And the same for the villages. I've always asked, "Let me know. You all have that one tree, that two tree, those trees." And we want to protect the majestic ones, right? The ones that have been there since you were kids. So let's schedule something and talk about what we can do.
And that was my next one, was, you know, the flame trees, because we're a harbor city, you know, the harbor city. And, you know, we only go out and cut trees that are obstructing.
Right.
Yeah, obstructing, right, you know, so that's why, like, not, we don't want to cut down a tree, but like the branches that are sticking out already, like to the sidewalks and all that, we just come and trim it. Again, we're going to need to get the permits for those?
Right. Yes. So what I suggest, because otherwise you're going to be like, "I'm in your office every other week." What we can do is do a line of inspections. And then in those inspections, we can say, "This is what's been identified, identified, identified." And as long as the tree work starts to happen, we can just put that all into one permit, like one list, and go through that. And it's just whoever's doing the tree work will want to make sure they were part of the inspection crew. So if you're contracting anything, just make sure they come back to us and check in, so we can tell them what's a good cut, bad cut. If it's our office working with you, then we'll just make sure you're aware of what, you know, if we need support. We don't have like big bucket trucks or trailer, you know, like, yes, we have trailers, but we don't have like the big resources and we don't dispose. So if we come out to do tree work with you, we are going to need a place to put that, and we are going to request that your staff or DPW or the partners... And we are going to request that your staff or DPW or the partners help remove the vegetation because it's more efficient for us to cut and go, right? Cut and drop. That way, the crew, which especially during this time of year, we might prune in the morning and we'd be like, listen, it's like 10:30, 11:00, we gotta go. We have to be ready to respond to fire. So please know that. Your forestry crew wants to help. We want to provide the support. But let's coordinate that. Let's make it more efficient for us to meet, go over the trees of question. And many times we'll say, you can totally save this tree. You can save it. Just give it a minute. Hagania. The tree up against the building, up against the building by the cathedral, I want to save it. It's possible. It's so possible. We can save the tree that's older than us and remove the structure and still have the containers put in place. So I'm putting that out there. There's a way to do construction and save these trees. You're not gonna lie to me, Christine, in the maintenance, but if you do good maintenance the first year, you won't have to come back and touch that tree again for another couple of years.
Okay, oh, the mayor of Chalapag was recognized.
I'm sorry, new mayor. Tree cutting. I have like four large trees. So, and I know I did send an email actually over to the Department of Agriculture requesting for assistance because I don't know what to do, right? They're huge. I'm looking at mitigation efforts to ensure that the trees don't fall onto the power lines, which then will lose power during a storm. So this is the first time I'm hearing about tree permit, tree-cutting permit.
So can I just, I was gonna say that the, all the, the older mayors should already know by now that there is a permit that is required. As a matter of fact, last year, we did mayor's council-wide session with forestry. And so I was talking to the executive director about those types of things again for this new term, so we could potentially put together another session with your team where we meet with the entire, a representative from the mayor's council, right? So like all of your CMWs or whoever you assign in your office will meet with forestry and talk about tree trimming and practices, so on and so forth, where the permits will also be discussed. So when we had that session with forestry, of course, it was open to everyone. And if they didn't attend for whatever reason, you know, that was their loss, right? But for Mayor Wayne, we could certainly do that for this new term.
Yeah. It's really cool, Wayne, to get to, mayor, to get to see you because we've talked on the phone like many times. So we will definitely open that same opportunity. So if there's a window that works like in schedule-wise for some of you, not all of you, we can have several trainings and bring your team members out and we can teach them. We can train them, good cut, bad cut. And then if it's like, well, that's an equipment issue too, you know, I mean, they're just not, they're still, you trained us, but they're still wary, your crew can help. We can help you. We just need to time this and schedule it right so that if it's an absolute risk, you guys know we will be there and we will drop what we can immediately. But if it's something that we inspected and we're like, it's more of a nuisance right now, but it's not a danger, it's not a threat, we're gonna get to it, we just ask for that patience. But we can definitely-
So you can also provide, like, doing an assessment of the village to ensure that, you know, we don't cut down trees that are, you know, I guess, protected as well?
Oh, you're so speaking to my heart. Yes. Yes. I have been waiting for the mayors to ask me for that. So, you know, I'm up here to be the big show for this division. I have a very, very humble crew. They won't promote themselves. It's my job to do that for them. So they will come out, they will do inspections. Rudy has actually been the one that's been delivering the tree, right tree, good cut, bad cut trainings. He trained GBB. And so we're still working with GBB because we saw some pretty crazy cuts by their contractor at Sante's Park. So there are definitely always going to be headaches. I'm being recorded, aren't I?
Yes, you are.
So we're working on it. We're working on it. But schedule us.
The mayor of Maleso is recognized.
Hi Christine. How do we address the roots? You know, if you don't want to cut a tree down, but the roots are the ones damaging the roads and stuff like that? I have one in Maleso right now that I got a permit, we trimmed it, but they said not to cut it down, but it's damaging the road.
We can, we can take a look at that and see if, what will happen is if we start cutting roots that are popping up, right, along the roads and sidewalks, it's just a matter of time of like watching the tree. It won't topple over. It's, there's more structure. Like a tree, the master arborist has trained us that when you actually take a tree and all of its roots intact out of the ground and you aerate, like you take all the soil and everything off and you put that tree back on the ground and spread out its roots appropriately and correctly, that tree will stand. So you can take a root, you can do, you can cut some points. You will impact that tree, you will see dieback, and then it just becomes a matter of monitoring and watching. It may be able to compartmentalize, it may be able to heal to some point, but these trees will far outlast us. It's just a matter of making sure we're not topping trees at a mature stage, then it's like, holy, right? If we can prune a tree just the way we want it to grow before it's a mature tree and you want to top it because of power lines, we want to get it at a certain age. So let's coordinate that. I want to see some smaller trees in parks, fruit trees that aren't 25 feet tall. I want fruit trees that are more closer to the ground so the community can literally just reach and pull and not damage the tree. So we can talk to you about that. But it's gonna take inspections.
Thank you. We'll set something up. We'll communicate with you on that. Anyone else have any questions for Christine? The mayor of Aganha is recognized.
Hi Christine. Hey. So, you know, I don't speak on behalf of Hagania, but I'm sure a lot of the mayors here are curious as well. The tree at the old, that office near Academy. What is a scoop on that?
That's the one.
I mean, only because we all, you sang out there. So can you, can you shed some light on that? Thank you.
Well, I just got a call from Fred, right? Fred Gofkins over at the legislature now. And so Fred called and he's like, what can we do here? They need to demolish the building. And so we took photos and video, shaded a beautiful job capturing that. We sent everything to the master arborist in Hawaii and he's like, you guys can totally save this tree. It can happen. He said, but it's just the demo, you know, you gotta get the person that's gonna demolish this building to actually know how to operate their equipment. But we can do it. I'm so curious. I'd love to see Hagania be the first village that's like, we took down a building and saved the tree. Who wants to be the first village to say that? I will blast you all over my 2,000-plus followers on social media. Yeah, we have an amazing social media account. So for anybody who's really curious about us, doag.forestry at Instagram, Facebook. This account, you want to see who's following. I mean, we have a lot of followers. We're a pretty dynamic account for GovGuam, really. And what we put in there are videos, how-tos, tips. After Typhoon Marwar, there were beautiful slides put together, keep this, not this, watch this, not this, very, and tips, because we knew everybody was getting a chainsaw. So it's like, what can we do to keep the public safe from themselves while operating a chainsaw and giving that to their teenager? Our summer youth program that came through, we trained the kids on maintenance. We were told we couldn't give them a chainsaw. So we trained them on maintenance, PPEs of the chainsaw, and operations, but they didn't get to operate them just because I'm being recorded. But we taught them how to do maintenance. So we're always looking for ways to educate the community, educate our youth, and your teams as well. So you want a tree pruning workshop with us? We do that. Everything we do is free. I just need a space.
Okay, anyone else? If not, like I said, we'll keep in touch. We'll see what we can do to set up something for mayor's council-wide. And you can talk to them more there. You can have the entire day.
I love it!
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, look for yourself. Any questions, just call us. I manage the account, so if you have any questions, you can ask me.
Thank you. Yes, and to your team. Thank you so much. You need time. We're gonna move on to our next, you know, agriculture is the star today because we have Dr. Turner. If you have not met her, she's here today and you could definitely have to meet her. You, there's the microphone. You're up.
Next time I do this, I'm gonna make sure that I'm not following Chief Christine. That is, that's impressive. I look to Chief Christine as like my big sister. All of her programs that she's developed since she started there, I aspire that Animal Health will be able to get there someday. We're not there yet, but here I am. We're started. Can we get the PowerPoint going, please? Thank you. So I am here today to just kind of chat with you guys about strengthening our response to the stray dog issue. I know every single village has this problem. Every single village, we've got stray dogs, free-roaming dogs that are causing issues. And so I'm here to kind of create more of a collaboration between our animal control officers and your staff. Next slide, please. So again, why am I here talking to you guys? I know this is something that animal control is charged with handling. However, you guys are kind of at the front line, right? You know, these are your residents that are dealing with the public safety issues with the stray dogs. Oh, you guys can also play the game of which village did we take these pictures from, too? So, could be any, any village, really. Yeah. Li Guan, my neighborhood, yay, that's us. Anyway, so yeah, so you guys are very, very familiar with this issue. As most of you are aware, you know, our animal control officers, like many of our GovGuam agencies, have limited resources. And so we do the best that we can, and a lot of your staff already help with this issue. So that's why I'm here today to talk to you guys about this issue. Next slide, please. What are we up against? How many dogs are we dealing with out there on the streets? So the initial survey for dog population was done in 2014, and at that time, the estimate was about 24,000 free-roaming dogs. That's not including the ones that are owned and stay inside and are pampered. And so to give you some perspective on that's what's in the streets, what are we able to handle with animal health? For calendar year 2024, we did receive over 1,000 complaints from residents, and about 25% of those complaints were what we categorize as like aggressive animals or bite holes. And so that's a pretty big percentage of free-roaming dogs that are causing some, you know, injuries or if not, at least a little bit of fear in our residents. Our animal control officers were able to pick up almost 1,300 dogs and cats. I kind of wish that we could have gone out and got one more so I could have said it was an even 1,300. But that's what we were able to pick up for the calendar year 2024. Bring those into Gain, who was able to take in just over 5,000 animals for that year. And then our low-cost span neuter clinic, the SNP clinic, we were able to do just over 2,500 surgeries in that time. All pretty good numbers, right? You know, we're doing the best that we can, but when we're up against 24,000 free-roaming dogs, it's quite a daunting task. Next slide, please. Just a brief update on the numbers that I was talking about. Most of you guys are aware, we did just redo the dog and now cat population survey in February. So we were out in the streets with a bunch of volunteers, not only counting the free-roaming dogs and cats that we saw, but also talking to the residents and seeing how many animals they own, what are the challenges that they're experiencing with animals. The results of that survey is still pending, should be getting that in a couple weeks or so. We will get updated numbers to how many animals we have that are free-roaming, how many animals that are owned, as well as we will be getting recommendations from the group that is analyzing all of this, is called Humane World for Animals. And so they do this across the globe, India, Costa Rica, everywhere where there are animals, which is everywhere. There is also Humane World doing some work in that spot. And so they'll be giving us some recommendations on what we can do to help manage our dog and cat populations. So that will be coming. So look out for that. I will be putting out the reports once that's available. Next slide, please. So with that, if you think about the original number of the 24,000 dogs, that was in 2014, if you just kind of think of it subjectively, we probably have a lot more than that now, right? About a decade later. So what are we dealing with? We're dealing with 24,000-plus free-roaming dogs. Some number that's gonna be bigger than that is what I'm expecting to get from this report. And who do we have at Animal Health that is dealing with that? Those three people, those three officers, and that one truck. That's what we got for Animal Health, to deal with 24,000-plus free-roaming dogs in this island, which is why I am here. Next slide, please. Obviously, like I said, we have very limited resources, and you guys are very much in the front line. You guys are getting the complaints from your residents of saying, you know, this dog was chasing my kid's going to school, you know, the mother uncle couldn't get out of the house because the dogs were out there or couldn't get their food delivered. I know you guys and your staff are helping where you can to address these issues for your residents. And you're also helping out the animal control officers already when you are able to. I also understand that your staff aren't necessarily trained with how to deal with animals and animal-related issues. So, next slide, please. We are very, very fortunate to have a animal handling professional, Mr. Adam Periscondola, sitting in the back there, came in with me. He is also with Humane World for Animals, same group that came out to help with the survey. He is with another program here to provide some training. So on Friday, we will be doing some training on how to handle free-roaming dogs safely and humanely. And this is really designed for animal control officers, our rescue groups, and then your staff, as well as the Gain Animal Shelter staff as well. So anybody that's really dealing with handling these free-roaming animals, that's what this training is for. The other thing that I really like about it is to be able to get everybody that deals with the issue in the same room. So, next slide, please. So this training will be this upcoming Friday afternoon from 1:00 to 5:00 at the GGO Research Center. And you guys all have your flyers there. There's a QR code there that you can pass around to your staff to get signed up. We'll be able to have a little bit of lecture with Adam, as well as some hands-on, interactive materials so that your staff members can kind of at least learn a little bit about animal handling, animal behavior, what it means when a dog's barking at you or coming at you or whatnot. And then also interact with not only Gain staff, but also our animal control officers and then some of our rescue groups as well. So we've got a nice, rounded group that's coming out, and it's a good opportunity because this is an island-wide problem. Next slide, please. So this training is really designed really for everyone, for every village. And we are all civil servants, and we do this for our people, our people of each village. I hope you guys recognize, for every village, for our people. Does anyone recognize that particular phrase? It's on your- Yeah, it's on your website. I stole it from your website. But I thought it was really appropriate because the stray dog problem really is in every village. And we all play a role in responding to that for our people. So I really liked that phrase on there, so I thought I'd throw it on this presentation for you guys. Last slide, I think. So thank you very much for your attention today. I hope to see some of your staff. I do know some, some staff members have already signed up to participate. If you have any questions, I'll be around and my email is on the flyer as well. And anybody have any questions at this point?
Is recognized?
Good morning. Hi. I was just wondering for Friday's course, is there a limit to how many staff members we can put on to the course?
So if we can get two to three from each mayor's, we're set up to get at least two to three from each mayor's village, we can, we can handle that. That's a nice thing about the research. I don't know if you guys have been up there to the Education Center in GGO. The room is pretty big. And then my backup plan is like, well, if a lot of people show up, well, we'll go outside. So there's always outside to use as well.
Anyone else have a question? If not, well, I guess we're all going to see you on Friday.
All right. See you guys there.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chen. Oh, I'm sorry. The mayor of MTM is recognized.
Hello there. Can you inform my colleagues as well as the public-- by law, how many dogs are you allowed to have?
Oh, great question, Mayor Paco. So by law, within a residential area, you are allowed to have four. Four dogs is your legal maximum in a residential area. If you live in zoned agricultural land, there actually isn't a limit. And so, you know, that's a really great question and something that you guys can work on in all of your villages because we do know that there are many people that own more than that.
Yeah, for sure.
Anything else? That's a great question.
Anyone else? Okay. If not, I guess we will see you on Friday. Thank you so much. So this was not on the agenda, and if there are-- I just need to make sure that there are no objections to it. But Bill Bennett is here. He did send in a request. There was obviously confusion, so it wasn't posted. We can't make a decision on it, on anything regarding the presentation. But are there any objections to hear him today? If none, Bill Bennett, please take the--
Well, good morning, mayors and guests. And thank you for allowing me to, you know, present a short discussion regarding village baseball. Little history lesson first. Guam Amateur Baseball, GABA, has been around for 14 years. And it's a registered Guam charitable nonprofit because GABA does a lot of alcohol, tobacco, e-cigarette prevention programs on Guam. All of our initiatives that we do has a component of prevention or healthy lifestyles, how to keep your body healthy. And of course, most of our initiatives deal with the younger kids in school, 18 years and below. In fact, currently, we're in our third year of doing the elementary school after-school program, which is a prevention program. GABA is made up of Guam amateur-- well, Guam Amateur Baseball, which is GABA, has Guam Baseball Academy, Guam Softball Academy, Guam Pony Baseball and Softball. And these, through our different initiatives, we use members from these groups to help us educate Guam's youth on protecting and maintaining a healthy body. Also, GABA has the middle school baseball softball program that we're running every year. In fact, the middle school baseball league is going on right now. We also do the amateur baseball league every year, and this year will be our 12th year of doing that. Originally, we used to do it at Leo Palace, but, you know, since COVID, Leo Palace is no longer an option. So we've moved to Ukodu High School. We use the two fields at Ukodu High School to do all our initiatives. So we've been able to do that with a partnership with GEF, Guam Educational Financing Foundation, which owns the Ukodu campus. And of course, GDOE is one of our partners. Last year, during discussions with the Lieutenant Governor, we were invited to come to a meeting to discuss the resurrection or the rescue of Paseo Stadium baseball field playing surface. GABA has experts within its group that designs and builds athletic fields. And if you've ever been to our Ukodu fields, you'll see probably the best playing fields we have on Guam. But the Lieutenant Governor discussion turned to, we want to bring back adult baseball to a Paseo Stadium. You know, the past several years, there has been no adult baseball going on at Paseo Stadium, and Paseo Stadium is being underused quite a bit. There's occasional youth programs and leagues going on there, and they have some international guests that use the field. So April last year, we continued to have discussions with a DPR initiative to bring adult baseball back to Paseo Stadium. So the discussion is what kind of adult baseball program would be the most beneficial to the community and try to get players out and play the game that they love, the older players as well as younger players. So the discussion turned towards village baseball, which I understand was popular years ago with the village baseball and the village softball program. So DPR, we entered into an agreement-- DPR entered into agreement with GABA to organize and run the games on the field. So our obligation would be to officiate the games and come up with rules and regulations for game play. Also, in the meetings, we're discussed how the village baseball program would work. And some of you are reading the handouts in there. It talks about what you need to know, and that these documents were given to the teams. So in July, we had a pilot program where we had a short tournament called the Liberation Baseball Tournament. And we had six teams. We played 16 games, just as a pilot program, to see how it would work out. And it was very successful. All the players, coaches, spectators want to see us continue the program. So having a village program is very successful, has a lot of benefits. It can be very successful. And I think the benefits are pretty obvious of getting the village and all the village members involved in supporting their team. Also, this could work into later on a youth village program of baseball that we could, you know, incorporate as an annual program. So on behalf of DPR, to make this program successful, we have to have the mayors involved. And what we're requesting is that the mayors take the time to organize the teams and find a coach that would, you know, lead your team into the league. And then, of course, as you see on the second handout, it talks about the mechanics of what the mayor and the mayor's offices and the league needs to do to make the league successful and to make the league respectable also. So that's our request. And before we take any questions, I'd like to have my associate come up and make some comments, and we can go forward with this. Mike Soderquist is our league coordinator and is handling a lot of the initiatives that we do for GABA.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor's Council, for allowing us to present today. Again, just to reiterate what Bill Bennett was saying is, really, we want to bring baseball back to the villages, and we really need your guys' help, the mayors, the vice mayors, to find the coach that's willing to, you know, organize a team and put the teams into play. And again, what Bill was saying is, hopefully, this leads to, you know, youth baseball as well, bringing back the youth baseball and softball to the villages as well. So I really have nothing more to add. Again, this is a DPR initiative, and we're just trying to really help promote it and push it along. Open to any questions that you guys might have.
Anyone have any questions? If none, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. The mayor of San Antonio is recognized.
Mr. President, can we take a five-minute break?
Any objections for a recess?
Exercise.
Okay. We'll have a five-minute recess, please.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, you know, I would support something with.
So they, they, it was already passed, people should have already thought about it, but Angel just wanted to come from. You know, we want, so my MP is going to go tomorrow, but like something, other names are involved, remember they came and they were doing the redistricting of all of them?
Mayors and vice mayors, please kindly take your seats. This meeting is now called back to order. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for February, please? There is a motion by the mayor of Talafofo and seconded by the mayor of, the vice mayor of Tamuning, any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report? There is a motion by the mayor of Chalanpago. And it is, there is a second by the mayor of Dedido, any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion. We'll move into the executive director's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am pleased to report that the operations day-to-day training held on February 12th and 13th was a success. Additionally, please note that the training originally scheduled for February 20th has been rescheduled for March 13th, which will cover the remaining villages that did not participate for the two days. Second, an email was sent out on February 10th requesting your office to submit the annual average expense budget. As we prepare, prepare for our budget submission, I want to thank all the villages that have already submitted their budgets. However, I am still awaiting several villages' submission, which would probably be around six or eight villages. Please note that is very critical for us to prepare the budget. And last but not least, I know everyone's been kind of waiting on this. The procurement method under the invitation for bid has been identified for the recycling revolving fund program. So, the abandoned vehicle has been packaged and the planning and drafting phase is ready for signature. Once that's completed, it will be forwarded to the attorney general's office for review. All other categories, which would be like the white goods, the electronics, the tires, those will be put under an I of B as well. Based on historical data, we've, we've, we've passed the threshold of small purchase procurement, okay? And that'll be it, Mr. President.
Thank you. So I just want everyone to be clear about the recycling revolving fund and there is, this is, this is drawn out, is being drawn out a little longer. And it is being drawn out longer because we have not been following procurement regulation when it comes to the purchase orders. And so now, we are going through the, through an authentic process that's going to give us clean marks when the audit comes. So, I know that everyone is calling for it, everyone is waiting, we're all waiting. And so hopefully, this is the first year, we will have to go through this process and by next year, it'll be even cleaner. Okay, so that's, just please be patient, we're, we're not just sitting on it, we're just trying to follow a process that is, that is in line with the law, okay? Any questions for the executive director, or the mayor of Gigo is recognized?
I know back in January, I had asked about the supplemental budget that's supposed to go to the individual mayor's office, what's the status on that?
I can reply, I can respond to that. So I was going to mention, talk about that in the budget, in the budget discussion. And like we mentioned, that, that was approved by the eight, 17th council. The balance of the 4.5 million was going to be divided, the council agreed that the balance was going to be divided equally. As of this time, because we've hired an accountant to reconcile our accounts, we cannot confirm that we have an actual balance. We cannot confirm that the balance is what was reported to me last fiscal year. So we cannot give anybody any money until the accountant finishes, completes the entire reconciliation of what is being requested, going back several years. So, from BBMR to our own office, last fiscal year, I was being given many different numbers. And the, those of you in the 17th council, you're going to remember this. Every month, we came back and I said, oh, look, we have this money, they, they told me, okay, we can spend it, we can, we can do something with it. Well, we never, we couldn't do anything with it, up to now, we couldn't do anything because the money really wasn't there. After they reconciled or did some kind of work with BBMR, only to find out that the money really wasn't there. So we, I went back to, to the council, to the 17th council, did the same thing, it was over and over again, I was given a number that was not true. And so even with this supple, what we consider a supplemental, it was announced and because we were preparing to spend the, the additional money or the extra money, I wanted to make sure that the council voted on it. And so unfortunately, the number that was given out is not a correct number. And we cannot confirm that we actually have a balance. So that's the answer to the, to the question as to, and that's for everybody's information, is that we cannot give, we cannot certify that there is an actual balance at this point.
So when would we know?
Okay, well, we're, now that one, I'd have to defer to the executive director, when we can, when we be able to, I guess, my, my request is that we would report several years of financial information to everybody. Because we have, myself included, I don't believe I was ever given accurate information, so.
I could take that.
Yeah?
So the council, in hiring the accountant, we have reconciled and have gone back two, three years because of prior year obligation. So that's where we're kind of finding out, we have prior year obligations, our books need to balance. And therefore, this is where the concern comes in. When we can get that to you, the accountant is currently working on those numbers. We're in the middle of preparing for a budget, but again, this takes us back to prior year obligations. So if you look at the budget bill, I believe 2021 Royale, tell me if I'm wrong, but 2021, 2022, or so 2020, 2021, allowed for prior year obligations, 2022 did not, 2023 did. So again, these are all prior year obligations that we are trying to reconcile as we speak. It's, it's, it's years back. I couldn't give you an answer, but we're trying to get that as soon as possible, I mean, right, because we're coming up with the budget, the budget bill. I know Royale and myself, and we just took on another employee as our administrative officer. We're collectively trying to gather all these numbers together with DOA so that we can come up with a, a good solid number. Again, I, I can't tell you at the moment.
I think what I can, I can add to that because we're gonna have to go in front of the legislature again. And so we're gonna need to have, you know, those figures ironed out by then. And so, I, I'm hoping that by the time we get to the legislature, we, we would have that ironed out.
Yeah, most, most definitely, at least when we submit, but couldn't tell you like today, tomorrow, next week.
So our submission is due March 27th, from the mayor's council. So that's why we've been asking you for your averages, because we're going to use that to help us develop the budget from the council. And so, but we're gonna, we're going off topic here. Any questions, any other questions for the exec, the mayor of Homatac is recognized?
Yeah, because we're, I'm running out of fuel, you know, I'm taking over five parts now. So I'm running out of fuel for my village to cut grass, so that's why, thanks to the Gigo mayor that brought that thing up, because we're down already to, for our fuel, and we need that money. And it's taking kind of long, so.
Totally agree with you, mayor, but I can't answer for the three-year prior obligation and what was expended for. I just need to make sure that when I sign, we do have money. And I can tell you, I will not sign if there's no funding.
Any other questions? If not, we're moving on to committee reports, I'm going to go down the list of committees, the commission on decolonization, any report?
No report at this time, President, thank you.
Thank you, the commission on the healing arts of Guam, he is not here, the Kaha is not here. Guam Early Learning Council, Mayor Louise, have you guys met?
No.
Okay, Guam Invasive Species Council, the mayor is not here. GDOE, any report on GDOE? Nope?
No.
No report, okay. Any discussion on GDOE? The mayor of Tamuning is recognized.
Yes, and again, I just wanted to bring up about the, the conversion of Chief Brody Memorial School. I know they just had their board meeting yesterday. And it was already passed by the board and instructed for GDOE to, to convert it, to convert Chief Brody to a middle school, and GDOE has come up before us to reassign the, the students that were going there. And so, you know, all that was done, the redistricting, the walkthrough of how much it will be to convert the school, the elementary to a middle school. There was also a bill in the past by Joseph Augustine and Talina Nelson to, you know, for like the funding, to allocate funding and, you know, that was all that was needed. This was all back, you know, it was, this was promised to us ever since, when they renovated Tamuning Elementary School, they saw the need for Tamuning children to have a middle school. And so back then, when it was Governor Ada, he had promised that, that Tamuning, when they made Tamuning Elementary bigger, they were going to convert Chief Brody to a middle school. That never happened, and so, you know, every year, the, you know, the, the families of Tamuning have been asking for this. It has been a long time need, and now today, the board has closed it. They're closing, you know, this is the last year for Chief Brody Elementary to be operating. So, you know, and even if with our municipal planning council's resolution and the board's approval that already happened, already the, the redistricting, the visit, you know, all that, it was, they were instructed to do it, but they just never did, because I know it had to also do with the staff of Chief Brody not wanting it closed. We get that, but now it's closed, and it was underserved with the number of students. The number of students we have going all the way down to PD for the middle school is, is a high number. And so, you know, again, this is a long time need that we have had. Ever, you know, it goes way back to, our Tamuning kids used to go to Dedido Middle School. When I was going to middle school, I had to go all the way to Orda, Chalanpago to Agida. Now the kids today are going all the way down to PD. And so, you know, I would just like to ask for the council's support in this. It was already approved, and we, they just want to reconfirm it. Now the board is asking us to come up with resolutions and all that, that will support, that we still need it. And it was, again, it was already approved, so I'd like to ask for the, you know, make a motion for the mayor's council of Guam to support this, you know, to have Chief Brody Memorial School converted to a middle school.
There is a motion on the floor, is there a motion on the floor? Are you?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for the support from the mayor's council of Guam.
Okay, there is a motion, is there a second? There is a motion to, for the mayor's council to support the, the conversion of Chief Brody to a middle school, and it is being seconded by the mayor, the vice mayor of Tamuning. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, I, I would like to ask, I just want to make sure, because I'm not completely aware of the details. And I'm willing to support it, to support our colleagues, but also to support the, the students of the village. But I'm, I would support it knowing that the, the work that was done, the necessary work that was done by GDOE and their, their stakeholders regarding the feasibility and then the financial, the, the financial feasibility as well, or financial impacts were considered. And if they were considered and GDOE finds it viable, then I, I'm in support of that.
Thank you.
Any, the mayor of Dedido is recognized.
Okay, so on, on our next meeting with the, with the board, which is on the 18th, I will be sure to bring up that situation as far as the conversion and get more details as to the conversion of the Chief Brody to the, to become a middle school. And I will get back to you guys on that day.
Thank you, anyone else have any discussion on this motion? The mayor of Zonia is recognized.
Not a discussion on that motion, but something else I would like to bring up, if, if that's okay?
If it's not germane to the, can we, after?
After, I thought we were done, sorry.
Any, any other discussion on this motion? If there are no discussions, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, thank you, anything else, Mayor Louise? The mayor of Zonia is recognized.
Hafidi, Mayor Benaventi, I would like to ask if you can also bring to the attention to the, the Guam Education Policy Board for the high schools in regards to the no-credit policy, along with the technical absence policy as well. In high school, as a former high school teacher, many teachers have been coming up with the, have been addressing this issue, and it may have to go through legislation. However, I think the, the, the high school individuals, the students are taking advantage of this particular, these particular policies in where we have students who are not coming to school for like 72 days and then being allowed to continue to graduate. And I think that that becomes frustrating for the teachers. The no-credit policy was removed, and it was, it was removed, and now it becomes an issue with the teachers in regards to trying to find feasible ways to make sure that that student graduates, but it becomes very frustrating for the teachers. And so, those are the two things that, as talking to teachers, those are high school teachers. These are the two biggest concerns that they have in regards to, you know, having the, assisting the, the student when it comes to graduating, so, thank you for that.
Mayor Benaventi, did you have any comment, or you're taking the note on it?
Yeah, I'm taking.
Okay, that's fine. Sure, anyone else have any questions for GDOE? The mayor of Santa Rita is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you also put down, Mayor Benaventi, on your notes if GDOE can actually get some system for security cameras? I understand that they've been approved for SRO, but not, the SRO cannot be everywhere in that one campus. Speaking on behalf, because Truman Elementary just got hit the other day. And I believe there was a lot of classrooms that were damaged, as well as the cafeteria. So if they can at least invest in some wifi system, that they can put some cameras, even the Ring, they can purchase it at Home Depot or something. Thank you.
The mayor of Sananya is recognized.
Sorry, I don't know if it was brought up, but just checking on the grass cutting, that's, it's still an issue. And I know that, I saw, I saw the. That's, it's still an issue. And I know that, I saw, I saw the RFPs or something like that a few papers ago, but I'm still dumbfounded that we still haven't found a solution on that. And I know we made our statements and our sentiments known the last meeting. I think the public agreed with a lot of what we were trying to do, but I still, I'm still trying to figure this out for them. And I'm hoping there's a solution down the line. It's going to be summer soon and we're going to be back to square one with the closing of the schools and the opening of the schools and the reopening of schools and contractors have been assigned to certain schools. And I haven't seen some of those contractors lately, so I'm not sure what happened. And I even asked the support staff where some of the contractors who won these bids for these schools, they were there, they did a few jobs and then after that they're stopped. I don't know if it's a payment issue, but I'm very concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for GDOE? Oh, the mayor of Aganiah is recognized.
To the Vice President's question, I understand. I had an event with Aganiah School yesterday and I asked about the grass cutting and apparently they have a 90-day emergency procurement for gas, grass cutting. Am I, are we tracking that correctly?
Yes, that is true. With the 90-day procurement, that was an emergency procurement for the grass cutting that was signed by the governor, I believe, last month. As far as how long that is going to go, I am not too sure exactly what's the duration for that, but I will get to it and see exactly how long the duration is for that contract, for that emergency contract.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else for GDOE? Okay, moving along. Guam Regional Transit Authority, Mayor Alvarez, any Guam System of Care, Mayor Royd, have you guys met?
No, President.
Okay. And GVB, Mayor Hoffman, any?
PD has responded, Meleso, Jonya and Sinahanya. Again, this is due on Friday. This kind of helps give us a benchmark line for the improvements that need to happen. I know some of these parks are not under your jurisdiction, but you're also the ones who they turn to and saying, "Mayor, why does it look like this?" Or "Why is this this condition?" It's a very simple survey. You can use your mobile seats and what issues that you do have because once we create this data set, this goes out and this is what we're going to use to help bid and clean the area. So if it says that this needs paint, this is your hazard, this is the condition, we need to answer this. Don't allow this to not happen and then you're going to be, "Oh, I'm late, I'm sorry, I was busy." We're all busy. We are all busy. We all have things to do. Some of us have more parks than the other. And so, please just get this done. You know, you've asked and you've depended and you're asking for funding for this. This is that vehicle. We're looking at about a $10 million spend on this. Don't be the village that doesn't respond and say, "Oh, I, you know, I missed the boat, sorry because, you know, I had XYZ." I mean, PD alone sentenced six. Thank you. No, that's perfect, exactly. From Santos Park to your playground area. So this is what it is. If the tourists are stopping there, I mean, I had a chance to tour the island two weeks ago. I went down south. I went to the other areas to saw some of your facilities. I know Frankie didn't know I was there, but I did it because we wanted to check what's going on, how they're responding and your peer and everything like that. You're right. And you're right about the routing and you're right about the parking spots. And I mean, the fact that you even have signs, "Watch out for falling branches," is concerning. But we want to make that right and there's some things we need to spend money on. And so, this helps us carve out that. So I want to thank you for that. And so, that's our next mission. So again, this is phase two of the, first we did the tourist survey, now this is the condition survey. This will help do that. Please submit things that are within, I would say like a tourist related site. So like we went to, like the Jonya overlook, we went there. That's a dangerous area. And so if some areas really shouldn't be a tourist site, then we need to, like, we kind of change that and delete that from that. Because there's an area in Talafofo that stopped there, there's erosion, it goes straight down. That's scary. And I was like, nobody should be stopping here. And I'm thinking that we should relocate your Talafofo sign and just clear all those yellow rocks and just put guardrail there and prevent people from pulling over because it's very dangerous. So, those are the kind of things we want to highlight and do that because ultimately it's visitor safety, resident safety and anybody there between your bushes and the ground, there's maybe about a one-foot gap. You fall down, you go straight down into Talafofo Bay. And also, I even saw, I think there's a car down there. There's a van down there that, that crashed years ago and it's still there because who's going to raise it up from there? And so, it's just very concerning. So some of these areas, like your beaches, like your overlooks, like your parks, I want to say, Humatec, fantastic job. I even talked to the vendors there. It was very busy and at the sites, but it's that kind of things and asking them, "What do we want to do?" That, it gives us the baseline. So please respond to the survey. It's due Friday and we can help put this together. So thank you. Any questions?
Quick question, sir.
The mayor of MTM is recognized.
Correct me if I'm wrong. You said if we don't have beachfront, we don't have to respond to it?
If you don't have any park, overlook, beach, any site, so then you don't have to respond at all. Yeah. So, but if you have something that the tourists do stop, like there's a spooky house there or some legend or?
Only swamp view, like.
Then you, then you can respond. But understand, yeah, that's, that's fine. You don't, not every, we're not expecting everybody to respond. Sinahanya has nothing on that end there per se, but we do, I mean, we just put our playground on Aganiah Springs, but whether it's a park or whatever else like that, at least it gives the condition survey and, but it's not going to be a priority on that end.
Thank you. The mayor of Assanmene is recognized.
Okay, I ran a survey on Assanmene. I don't know if you visit that area. If you notice all the beach park, the picnic tables. Sooner or later, we're going to lose that part. Erosion is going to keep hitting it and sooner or later, we're going to be losing our flagpole and the monument there. So I'm just, just checking. Thank you.
Yeah, so it, again, it'll be assessed by the professionals and if some areas, because you're going to get climate change, rising, constant erosion, some things we can't fix, it's either relocating it or taking it out of service because some things are going to just be too dangerous for you or the investment's going to be too great. So, I'll go back to Meleso. The, because the structures are so close to the ocean side, they're spalling and the concrete is very dangerous. So some areas, what would be the solution for that? Whether, it's not rebuilding that, but maybe transferring, moving it away from that area, moving it, building it bigger. One thing we noticed in, like in Alahan was there's no bigger trash cans. The lady across the street sells so much food that the trash cans are so heaping. But I know if, if the mayor had to spend that time, he would just have one staff there cleaning the whole time and that's really not the view of that. So how do we balance that and who's maintaining it? Same thing with Talafofo, same thing with Haget. Everything that we saw was, you know, is somebody tasked to clean it and fix it because that, some of it really doesn't fall on you, but it's a reflection of you because it's in your village. So, we're trying to find who's, one, responsible and two, how can we make it better? Whether we contract somebody to stand there and clean the toilets every other day or every day, or do we hire a family next to it? That's actually what we're looking at on this end.
Anyone else? Thank you. The Peace Council, Mayor Chompakul, have you met? No? Okay. Serv of Guam Commission, Mayor Bijji, have you met?
We haven't met, but there have been a lot of information coming through. So, once I get all of that, then I'll report.
Sure, thank you. The UG Board of Regions Nominating Council, Mayor Wayne, have you met? Okay. And did you have anything to report on the Sexual Assault and Family Violence Coalition?
They did send out their April schedule events and I'll be forwarding that so that everyone's aware of what's happening.
Okay, thank you. For the Elder Justice Advisory Council, I would like to report that we, we meet regularly and we don't have statistics by village, but most, most people visit the, the center for legal assistance and it's typically Manamko. And it is not by financial status. It really, it's by need. And so, we're, we were funded, the council was, or the, the advisory, the, the center was funded by ARPA in the past few years. And so, we're going to have to lobby to the legislature to fund the center this coming fiscal year with general fund money or something else. So, that's, that's an uphill battle from the council. Other than that, there's, there's nothing new. Mayor Frankie, anything from veterans issues or any veterans committee? Nothing? Okay, great. Any other standing committees would like to report at this time? If not, we'll move on to unfinished business. Funeral escorts, I want to, this is the first official meeting that we're discussing, the funeral escorts after the meeting with the chief of police and GFD. And there has been no official notice that has gone out. However, you'll, you want to be guided by the discussion by the chief of police and the, and the documents that were submitted to us or given to us, shared with us regarding the law. And the law is that one, we cannot use the side, the, the color lights that you're using, you cannot use that without his permission, his, his authorization or the chief of police authorization. No mayor, no village has been authorized to use those lights, number one. Number two, the sirens. They have to be authorized by the chief of police and no mayor's office has been authorized to use a siren. So, already, those are the two things that do not permit you to do a funeral escort. And the third, which is probably the most important, none of us have received any kind of training to properly conduct a funeral escort. So we talk about leapfrogging. None of us have received that training. And so, based on all of that, the mayor's council is being, we are admonished in some way to remember that it is against the law to, we can't break the law, so just don't do it. It's not my law and it's not my directive. It's the law. So we're letting you know, and I did send out the, the notice to the funeral homes informing them that they, we, we will not be performing them, we will not be coordinating them and that sending the requests to the offices, I, I forgot how I worded it, but I was, I asked them nicely not to send the requests to you, to our offices because we could no longer do them. Okay? Any questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the MCOG budget. So a lot of it was discussed earlier that we needed to discuss and it was really the averages that you need to send us. We're looking at ensuring that we get you an average for your, for fiscal '26, for your regular services, right? Your fuel, your maintenance, your office. The addition to this, to this budget is certainly going to be our discussion with the feral pigs from USDA. So that is going to be included in the entire mayor's council budget. We also will have to take a look at our staffing pattern. So we're talking about being able to adjust salaries within your offices, add on employees in your offices as well as our central office. So, we're working on that on our end. Our end, meaning the executive director, myself and, and her staff, as far as what that number will look like. Because we know that everybody wants some flexibility, we're going to try our best to allow you to have that flexibility within the budget. Any questions? Okay. Again, this is the initial discussion. It'll, it'll appear at almost every meeting until our public hearing, which will probably be sometime in the summer, hopefully. Okay? If there are no questions, we're moving on to the 81st Guam Liberation. I know that, I'm not sure, Mayor Bijji, if you have any, any update on your committee?
As a matter of fact, I do, President. Thank you very, very much. I provided the mayor's council a brief, not really brief, but the Liberation Day Queen Coronation. We actually just, the, the committee, again, this is not, nothing has been set in stone yet, but I wanted to bring this to the attention of the mayor's council because I know that some villages have already started fundraising for their specific candidates. And we want to make sure that the committee that was put together, we want to make sure that we are thorough in how we explain this year's coronation. And if you take a look at the requirements, we pretty much followed in pursuit of last year's requirements, adding on the discussion that we had in our last mayor's council meeting, adding on the pageantry part to the, to the qualifications. So, we actually, the committee actually put together the 50%, as we discussed, 50% will, will still remain traditional. And if you look on page, on the second page, on number six, when it comes to scoring of fundraising efforts are as follows. And so, for example, of course, in order for a candidate to be eligible based on the, the qualifications from last year's application, right, you would need to have a minimum of $2,000 or the candidate would need to have a minimum of $2,000. So, the question was raised as to how do we go about in, in judging a specific candidate when it comes to raising funds? So not necessarily if your candidate raises the most money or the village raises the most money, that doesn't necessarily mean that that candidate becomes the queen. It is based also on pageantry and that's the other 50% of, of the judging criteria. But if you would look at the, the amount, this is just, again, a brainstorm, right? If you look at the amount, for example, 5,000 that was raised from the candidate would be 25% of the judging criteria. So that 25% will be added on to the, to the pageantry side of the judging criteria. And of course, the judges who are selected will take that into consideration. And then, the overall score would, would, would be the, the placing of that specific candidate. The, the beauty of this is that we don't necessarily have to identify one specific candidate per village. This opens up the door, again, this whole process was to kind of open up the door for more participation. And the committee did take into consideration the ages from 18, I thought it was 16, but when we, when we reviewed last year's application or qualification, it was 18. And we just pushed it to 30 and then also including mothers. So that was, that was included in this particular qualification form. So if, if possible, President, if the mayors can please read, again, this is, this is again up for, you know, review for everybody, but we want to make sure that we get this done and agreed upon as soon as possible so that, it's already March and I know that everybody's already preparing for liberation. And in the meantime, the committee will continue to, to meet and to discuss further what the, the decision of the, of the mayor's council would be. Sisusmasi.
Any questions for the committee? I think if, if you're okay with it, I, we can call, I think some might have to review it, right? And we'd have to make sure that all the members receive it. So if we could, by the April meeting, wow. Well, that would be the soonest, if that's okay, because it is a major change in the way we're going to do it. If I could ask that by the April meeting, we make the decision on, on your final draft. So if this is, if this, if you're, if this is being submitted as the final draft, if I could, is this your final?
Well, yes. This is, this would be the, the submission for the final draft for the mayor's council's review.
Consider, okay, great. So if I could ask then to ensure, Rika, that every mayor and vice mayor receives a copy of this electronically so that if, if by today or by at least by tomorrow, so that they have a complete month and we can make the vote on the next meeting based on these new rules and regulations. Are there any objections to that? Okay. Thank you so much for the work. Anybody have a question? The mayor of Tumuning is recognized.
Yes, I just wanted to find out, is somebody already working on ordering the tickets, you know, for the cells?
So, based on our last conversation, this whole, this whole revamping of the, of the Liberation Queen Coronation would, would remove us from, from printing tickets. So if you actually look at the qualifications, this opens the door for the candidates and the commit, and the sponsoring, the sponsors to, to fundraise. But of course, like in the previous years, we did have tickets being sold, but I'm, I know, we all know that people did fundraisers just to pay for those tickets. In the qualifications, it did state that, it does state that the candidate herself has to identify a charity. So, with, with all of that said, Mayor, there was no discussion as to, as to- So with, with all of that said, Mayor, there was no discussion as to, as to printing out tickets, and that, that also helps with our budget as well, which, there's nothing, but, you know, that would just also help alleviate the expenses. Now, if the mayor's council decides to print tickets, then that's fine, we can move forward in that, and still keeping this, this, the way this, this is written. Sisus Masai.
Any other questions? So the, the biggest change with the, with this new set is that we are not printing any tickets. You're fundraising based on however you want to fundraise. So if your organization as a sponsor, if you want to create a raffle in your village, then you can create, you can have the Santarita Liberation Raffle, right? Or the Tumuning Liberation Raffle, and, and follow the rules, the, don't forget to follow the D R T rules, because there are rules at D R T about raffle, right? So you follow that as it is. Okay, any other questions for Mayor Bijie? Any other liberation questions? Okay. If there are none, we're moving on to the A M I M Thirty-First General Assembly. The newly elected president is not here, and I was going to request for an update from the assembly, but Mayor Louise is here. Can you share an update on that assembly, please?
Thank you very much. I, I did request for the, the recordings and everything so that we can have the minutes transcribed, because I know in the past, it was always the office here, but they were, you know, because of, of our, you know, different things, different events happening, we're also requesting for every mayor and, you know, of all the different islands to please submit in their festivals, their activities and events, those things that are going on. And I will try to have the minutes for you as soon as possible, as soon as I, I get the recording and all the notes.
So I just want to be clear, I just want to be clear, I'm not sure what the council has to do with A M I M.
Okay, no, because the mayor's council is part of the, are members of the A M I M, so.
Correct, but the minutes?
But the president did ask for all the members to provide that, to provide their events and activities, you know, so that we can share that with everyone in the council. We'll have that calendar of events ready, and, and also to, you know, I will also have the minutes out for you on what happened at that assembly.
So I know that the, during the standing committees, there was a lot of discussion about what everyone was going to do. And this is what I mean about A M I M, ladies and gentlemen. This is not a junket. If we're going to go there, let's go do something. To not have a report about why we went to Tinian is absolutely unacceptable. I am saying this because our brothers and sisters in Rota, Tinian, and Saipan are relying on us to help them with their efforts. But we're going to come here and not have a report? Rota had a lot to say, Tinian had a lot to say, so did Saipan. And we cannot, from Guam, with the most membership, cannot have a report? That's why in the Seventeenth Council, I said we should dissolve this association, because if we cannot come here collectively, attend an, an assembly collectively, and be productive, and not waste money, then there's no reason to be there. There is a report that, that needs to come out of that, that Thirty-First Assembly. And one, even my committee reported, I reported, that we're going to have this exchange come May, and that Guam will be a part of this exchange in May, and that we will involve the, the islands. And we will develop, on Guam, we will develop our criteria and how we're going to select our five students that will have this exchange in May during the Mango Festival, where we're going to have another general assembly, to do what? To eat mango? So I'm not going to report on what all the, the other standing committees are, we're going to wait on minutes that are going to come from, I don't know where. But I will call, for my standing committee, I will call a separate meeting regarding the exchange that will occur in, in May. At that committee meeting, we will determine how we're going to select our students from Guam to participate in the exchange come May.
My apologies, Mr. President. You know, in the past, for everyone's knowledge, in the past, the staff that has gone with us and the executive director are usually the ones that help us with the minutes. In the past, it was Elaine and Joanne. So this time, I was very happy to hear that our executive director and Bing was going. Unfortunately, they were not able to be in the meeting, to hear everything that happened. But I did do recording, and I am working with also the former secretary that was assisting us, our, our help, to get the recording and the full minutes of, of what happened there. I don't want, I'm sorry, I don't have it with you, with me today to provide to you, but I'll get that to you as soon as possible.
There's still no report. Anyone else want to report on A M I M General Assembly that attended it? And it's not staff's responsibility. If there is no other discussion on the General Assembly, I'm moving on. Okay, new business, user fee schedule. I have to commend the team from Dedido, the mayor and the vice mayor have been working very well to move forward with their programs in the village. The vice mayor, she is a very tough cookie. She likes to go out and do different things, and the one thing she's been looking at is the user fee schedule. And it has been a discussion since the Seventeenth Council regarding the user fee schedule. You were given two sheet, two drafts that both say Appendix A. And I want to acknowledge former mayor Melissa Savores and whoever else, I apologize, I don't know who else assisted her in developing this, but she began this, began this schedule. And we agreed in the Seventeenth that we would table this until this new council, so that the new mayors could review this schedule, and we will proceed with proposed legislation. The need for this adoption of a, of a user's fee schedule is so that we can charge for the use of facilities within our offices and our municipalities. You're given, again, you were just given today, the two drafts. I, is there anyone that has any input or any recommendations regarding setting the user fee schedule? This has to go through a process, it will have to go through the legislature for ratification, and then of course, the governor for signature. So it is a, a complete public process. We, at the very beginning during the pandemic, you might have heard that the mayor's council was crazy because we were going to charge for mayor's verifications. Again, it appears on one of the drafts here, and we agreed as a council that we weren't going to entertain it at that point. But again, for the sake of the new members, I think it's important that everybody has the discussion and that you weigh in on, on this final proposal to include in legislation. Any, 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 the mayor of Agania Heights is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this user schedule is really, it's, I, it's a good guide, but you know, also, you also get from teams, they give supplies for usage of the field. So could you kind of maybe expand on that? Thank you.
So this, this would be so that you have the authority to charge, but you also have the authority to lend it for free, right? So if, if there's a barter system, right, that, you know, Team A is using my field X amount of time, and they're cutting the grass, and they're disposing my trash weekly, so I'm not charging them, that's your prerogative. But if Team B comes in and says, well, or someone else is already cutting the grass, and someone else is already taking out the trash, we're going to pay you. Well, then that's where you follow a schedule, right? You could follow a schedule. So that's, because as of it is, as, as of right now, you cannot charge them, right? You cannot accept a, there's no charging mechanism, you don't have authority to charge, you, where are you depositing the money? You're not, can't charge them, as of now. Is that clear? I mean, did you get, the mayor of Sinahania is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. In July, I sent you the, the others category, I can see it on this one here.
Okay, so I was looking for it.
And we did it by square foot, I think this is the.
You know what, I was looking for that.
Because we have Sinahania, Ordo Chalapago is going to go online, we have the Agania Heights outdoor facility, as well as like Baragada. So we did it by square footage, so it would be for like, we're performing art spaces, stage, everything like that. So this is kind of what that's, so zero to five thousand square feet, five thousand to ten thousand, ten thousand and above. So I think that was a reason, that was a reasonable rate cost, so it was on July third. So if we can just include that in this, so then it covers what's, covers kind of the future for what we need to do.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know what, and that's why I said I didn't know who else helped her, she, that is correct. I was actually looking for that because I recall that that was a better method to derive a, a charge based on size, because if you looked at Sinahania's field versus, I don't know, M T M's field, M T M's is bigger than Sinahania. Just thought I'd share it. You know, something like that. So Mayor, that is correct. So Mayor Hovman and Mayor Savores, that's correct, thank you so much, I appreciate it. And, and it, we'll share this with you, and it is by square feet, because again, it just depends. Just like my Santos Park in P D, it's huge, and if you compare that to some, a smaller place, you know, I don't want to just charge fifty bucks when Santos Park is, is a larger space. So it does make sense. The mayor, M T M is recognized.
Quick question.
Yes.
Banner and billboards, two hundred to five hundred? The last one on.
Oh, so you know in Dedido, Mayor Savores, she got plenty big billboard, you know? Government, so she were going to charge for that. So you could charge for that, and that's, it's a good way to make money, right? But you can't charge now, you just can't charge for it. Okay? So that's, adding that on allows you to do it. So like, if, if Mayor Bada has Seti Bay wall because that belongs to him, and he wants to charge for it, he can charge for that on the wall, you know, to, for someone to advertise on the wall. Okay? Any, the mayor of Jigo is recognized.
So looking at the fees, is this an overall, like, is it per day, or?
Yeah, it's, it's by you, well, it says, you know what, yeah, it is per day.
Okay, per day.
It's per day.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I am asking, I'm, I'm almost begging you to send me your thoughts on this, because by the next meeting, this will appear on unfinished business, so that we could move on to drafting legislation, so that we can make this go through, if you decide you want this to go through. Okay? Any other questions on the user fee? Great, thank you so much, and we're going to move on to announcements, any announcements? The mayor of Tumuning is recognized.
I'm sorry, everyone, I just noticed that our president of A M M and our treasurer sent a letter for me to read to all of you in regards to the, to Association of Mariana Island mayors and vice mayors. It says, he wants me to read it, so it's, Buenos an hafa de colleagues, I hope this letter finds you in good health and high spirits. On behalf of the Thirty-Second Association of Mariana Island mayors, vice mayors, and elected municipal council members, I cordially invite you to participate in one or more of the four newly established committees. These committees were created to strengthen our collaborations across the Marianas, fostering unity and lasting partnerships. Social Cultural Development Committee chaired by Mayor Jesse Alacapiti, this committee will focus on cultural preservation, educational initiatives, and community building activities, ensuring that our unique heritage and traditions continue to flourish. Number two, Environmental and Natural Resources Committee chaired by Mayor Arby Komacho of Saipan, charged with the protection and sustainable use of our natural resources. This committee will address environmental concerns, conservation efforts, and promote eco-friendly initiatives throughout the Marianas. Number three, Economic Development Committee chaired by Mayor Aubrey Hokukavroda, aimed at improving economic opportunities and fostering growth. This committee will explore new business ventures, support existing enterprises, and collaborate on projects that strengthen our local economies. And number four, Governmental Affairs Committee chaired by Mayor Edwin Aldon of Tinian, this committee focuses on policymaking, intergovernmental relations, and legislative matters, striving to ensure fair representation, effective communication, and streamlined cooperation between various governmental bodies. Your expertise, dedication, and unique perspective are invaluable to the success of these committees and our collective mission. By joining, you will play a key role in bringing positive change to our communities while building and maintaining strong partnerships across the islands. I highly encourage your participation in any or all the commun, the committees, and ask that you contact the following respective chairs to receive information or be included in the different work sessions. Each committee is expected to meet so that we can be prepared for next A M I M General Assembly meeting to be held in Guam on May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, and May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Thank you for your continued commitment to the betterment of our island. I look forward to our collective efforts in these committees and the positive impact they will bring to our communities. Sincerely, Mayor Kevin Sisweko, A M I M President.
Any other announcements? If there aren't any other announcements, it is twelve twenty-six, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody. I want to thank the, oh, the mayor of Agania Heights for hosting us on this Wednesday, Ash Wednesday fasting day.
Of course, Mayor, this is like, this is like what you get when you're the, the, what you call that, the, the newcomer. So they give you the.